Todd, would you just state your last name for me, please?
Sure, it's Dale, D-A-L-E. I got two first names and two last names.
So this is called to order at 6:05 on November 5th, 2020, virtually via WebEx. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony by community members with respect to a variance pursuant to Section 72-2 to permit the development of an eight-story seller residential building, contrary to ZR 2347 rear yard in an R-7A zoning district at 1284 East 19th Street between Avenue L and Avenue 8 block 31. This is a BSA calendar number 2020-55BZ, and the applicant's representative is Todd Dale. Members of the public were asked to pre-register to speak by emailing the Community Board 14 office. Pre-registered speakers were asked to state their name and whether they live in the district and represent an organization or represent an organization. Those speakers were asked to also provide addresses by email for the record. But of course, they are not being asked to state addresses on this WebEx hearing forum. Members of the public who are viewing the meeting on YouTube and would like to comment on this issue And those emails will be collected for the record. Please include your address and organization. It belongs to an organization in the emails. The board who are participating in the ring for WebEx can use your face or her hand or ask to speak in the comments on the web screen. Please clearly state your name prior to giving testimony. Repeat that. Please clearly state your name prior to giving testimony. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant's representative, Todd Dale. Todd?
Hi, good evening. I'm not sure if you could just confirm for me, did committee members receive a copy of the application or not? I'm not sure if I need to share my screen at all.
The board received a copy of the application.
Great.
However, if you could share your screen, feel free.
All right, so we'll start with the presentation, and if there's any questions that come up, we'll share materials as we need to. So as you stated, this is an application. It's pursuant to 7221 of the zoning resolution, seeking a variance that would allow in an R-7A district construction of a cellar and eight-story residential building that does not provide a required rear yard, as would be required by Section 23-47 of the zoning resolution. This site, it's in a regular angled lot. It's located on the west side of East 19th Street. It's about 222 feet north of the intersection with Avenue N. The lot has approximately 41 feet frontage on the west side of East 19th Street, and then it has a depth of about 142 feet. It's irregular. The total lot area is 7,400, excuse me, 7,046 square feet. Currently, it's developed with a one-family, one-story residential building that was constructed circa 1966, 1967. It did have a certificate of occupancy that was issued by the Department of Buildings. This proposal would seek to demolish that building in order to make space for this new building, should the application be granted. With respect to the proposed building, it would be a cellar and eight-story residential building that would be comparable to existing large multiple dwellings that are located in the lots immediately to the south and immediately to the north of the subject lot. A cellar would be storage and utility spaces. The first floor would include three residential units in the entrance lobby, and then the upper floors, the second to sixth and seventh and eighth floors, would each include four dwelling units per floor. The total would end up being 31 dwelling units, and the total floor area would be 26,924 square feet. That is an FAR of 3.82, which is less than the permitted 4.0 FAR in this particular zoning. The relief required is actually a simple, as opposed to many variances. This is a simple, single relief that sought. This proposed building as designed would not provide a required rear yard per Section 2347. The crux of the issue is, is that if you look at the lot, it is an angled lot. Just to put some background on this lot, it was actually formerly a street. We're not sure if it was ever fully developed or not. But in 1952, New York City eliminated its use as a street and created a tax lot for it, and then actually then sold it to a private owner originally in 1960s. But that's why this runs at an angle, excuse me, an angle slightly different than other lots that are on the subject block. Because of its orientation and because there is not a full street frontage, there's a little notch in the front of the lot on East 19th, is the best way to describe it. The short of it is, is that the southernmost lot line is actually considered a rear yard and not a side yard based on the definitions within the zoning resolution, because it's within 45 degrees of being parallel to the street line of East 19th Street. The result of this is, is that because it is considered a rear lot line and not a side lot line, it's required to provide a 30-foot rear yard, as opposed to what would normally be in this district, either a lot line building or an eight-foot side yard. You're allowed to either do zero, eight feet in this district. The result of that is, is that if you look at the as-of-right drawing, if a 30-foot rear yard were provided along the south lot line, it creates this incredibly narrow as-of-right building that I think is approximately only, let's see what I can get here, the as-of-right building would be 12 feet wide. So it would run for the length of the lot, and it could only be 12 feet wide, which would just be infeasible to construct. One thing of note is that the existing building that is on the lot, the one-family building, is actually located in what would be the required rear yard. It was reviewed and approved by the Department of Buildings when it was constructed in the 1960s. It's unclear as to why the Department of Buildings didn't raise a rear yard objection at that time, but they did not, and they allowed the construction of the building. This approval, or this proposal does seek to develop essentially the same spot where this existing building is, pursuant to the both district requirements of the R-7A district, and we're seeking relief for that lot line. We do believe that this does meet the findings for a variance. You know, there are very unique conditions affecting this lot. It's because of its angular orientation and the shape and the fact that it doesn't have the full frontage on East 19th Street, requires this unusual rear lot line situation. The proposal is seeking to build a building that would be in character with most of this neighborhood, which is primarily developed with residential multi, multiple dwelling units, including, as I said, if you have the photos in the application packet, you can see that the buildings to the south and the north are very similar to what's proposed, large, multi-story residential buildings. And the relief sought is only for this one particular yard. No other relief is sought with respect to the floor area, any other side yards, parking, bulk, anything. This is the singular relief. That's a quick presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions about the design or the lot that the committee might have.
I can say something, Todd? Okay. Only board members, if you have a question, please raise your hand. I see Prime Gornberg's hand literally raised.
Thank you. Question, the lot is, the house is all the way in the back of this lot, am I correct in saying that?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear that.
The house is all the way in the back of the lot, so it's coming out all the way to the front?
You're saying that the proposed building or the existing home?
Well, the existing one, I believe, is all the way in the back, am I correct?
It's mostly to the back, yes. Let me see. It does extend more towards the south. It is more towards the back of the lot than immediately up to the front of the lot. You're correct.
So it's going from where it is now, all the way up to the front of East 19th Street, am I correct? To be like the equivalent to the other houses, that's where you're working?
I guess I'm not quite sure. I'm sorry if I'm not quite hearing or understanding.
The way I saw it, it's, the house is basically behind the apartment building. So my question is basically, is a new house going to be next door to the apartment building or also further in the back?
The new, so you're saying the new proposed building?
Correct.
The new proposed building as designed would, hang on a second. It would provide, just so you know, it would provide what is a side yard, but would provide a 30-foot yard in the back of the building. Side yard, not a rear yard by zoning, but there'd be 30 feet there. It would propose to be up to the lot line on the south, which is a little bit farther than where the existing home is. However, the existing multiple dwelling that is on the south has no windows there, so building on the lot line would not interfere. And then there would be an eight-foot side yard to the north, which is where the current existing building there has its fire escapes. And then the building itself would extend up to the lot line, so the
On East 19th, you're correct.
Yes, the proposed building would be up to the front on the lot line at a portion of that. As I said, there would be an eight-foot side yard to the north, so approximately the lobby entrance is essentially what that is, the notch towards East 19th would be about 60 feet.
Okay, and the fire escapes are staying in the next building, am I correct?
The fire escapes are existing there, there's actually an easement on record requiring, just so you know, there's an easement on record that requires a three-foot portion along the northern portion of the lot not be developed. There is an easement there that allows for those existing fire escapes. We're actually seeking to provide eight feet, which is wider than the easement. And the reason it is eight feet, because the way the zoning district works is that you do not normally need to provide a side yard, but if you do, it must be a minimum of eight feet, so that's why eight feet.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Ed, you have Gregory Alvarez, Barton Prisant, and Glenn Woolen all had hands up, and Boris Noble.
Okay, let's start with Greg. Greg, and ask you a question.
One moment, Ed, I'm going to try to unmute him for one moment.
Okay.
Greg, are you unmuted now?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, great. So yeah, just, I think, following up on the last question then. Could you show us actually what the, what the site plan looks like? Just to see what that, what really was a rear yard, what that would look like on the plan? Just to see how that, how that looks in connection with the to-be-remaining single-family home that's behind, that would be behind the building?
Sure. Is there, I can try and share my screen. I don't know if that's a function I have, or if you, as the moderator, have the ability to give me that power?
Todd, you do have the ability. There's a button right below, on the bottom, that says "share", and you are a presenter, so you can go ahead and share that. And also, Greg, you have those materials emailed to you in your email as well.
All right. Unfortunately, my share power is grayed out on my screen. It's not letting me
Let me see if I can resolve that. It might be because you're on audio, but one moment.
I tried to start my video. Is my video not working?
Yeah, your video is not, not working.
Huh, okay. Let me see what I've got, because it says "stop video".
Yeah, Todd, unfortunately, you have low bandwidth, according to my error message here.
Okay, I'm working out of a home office, so maybe my middle room is not working very well.
Sorry for that. It says, yeah, due to low bandwidth, video is not currently available, only for you. So Greg, next best option might be if it's not too much inconvenient to pull it up from your email. Sorry, everyone.
No, that's not a problem.
The best thing I can say is, in order to get, if you have the plan set in front of you, sheet number BSA-004 shows the current building footprints. And if you look at the site, which is highlighted in red on this lot, which is Lot 31, you can see the other buildings on the adjacent lots, which are 40 to the south, 24 to the north, which are the two large multiple dwellings, and then Lot 72, which would be to the west, which is the other one-family home. And you can see, I don't have the exact measurement there, but I would estimate that that is at least 30 feet. So between what is proposed with this building and that existing one-family home, it would be a minimum of 60-foot space between the proposed building and that existing one-family home.
Okay, that, I think, answers my question. I'll take a look at the plan as well, just to confirm that. Okay, then one other question. With the, with the request for the variance, are there any issues in connection with clearance for windows or anything like that along that lot line? I imagine not, but just like to hear, because I know you said that the fire escape needs to be cleared on the north side. Are there any clearance issues on the south side in that regard? Or have the buildings been designed so that there won't be any windows or anything on that shared lot line?
I would say both, the building's been designed, so there's no issues, and there would be no issues. The building to the south, which is on Lot 40, only has one portion of that building, which is on the shared lot line, and that building has no windows on that wall. So where our building would be attached, or essentially right on the same lot line, we wouldn't be blocking any windows to the south. To the north, where the fire escapes are and those existing buildings, there are the windows there, and there's the fire escape access, and that would be the eight-foot, which is the required side yard pursuant to R-7A district regulations.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's all I had for now. Thank you.
Okay, Barton Prisant?
Can you hear me now? Is that coming through at all?
Yes.
Yes, Barton.
Thanks. So as I understand it, what you're saying is even with the variance which you're requesting, you're still ending up with an FAR that would be less of as-of-right, is that correct?
Correct. The proposed FAR would be 3.82. The R-7A district allows for a 4.0, so approximately 0.18. Or not approximately, exactly, 0.18 FAR lower.
Interesting, but it's clearly a soft site, since all there was on the lot was a one-story unit. So remind me again, what are the adjacent lots? How high are they?
The adjacent buildings, hang on a second, they're both large multiple dwellings. Let me see if I can get stories on them. To the north, it looks like it is a six-plus story building. And to the south, I think it's four, but might be a four-plus. But that's a very large building, the one to the south.
Okay, and to the rear?
To the rear, it's, the rear is a very similar one-story, one-family building. When the original owner purchased these lots from the city in 1960, they built one families on these, these two lots. So the building that would be to the rear on Lot 72 would, would be very similar to this particular building constructed around the same time, 1966, 1967.
And the owner of that lot has chimed in on this or not, Sean, or do we know?
The neighbors were, neighbors were notified within the, within the radius. Is that, Todd, can you confirm that?
Yes, we would, just, yeah, so when we, well, they wouldn't, they would be notified when we're assigned a hearing at the BSA, where we'd be required to issue out a mailing to everybody that's within, for this particular application, within 400 feet. So they definitely would receive a mailing once the BSA hearing is announced. Now, just so you know, administratively at the BSA, we had filed the application, we've received the notice of comments, which is the initial review. We're in the process of responding to the notice of comments and hope to have a submission in shortly. So there is no hearing that has yet been assigned at the BSA, but we're hopeful to get, as I said, get the response to comments in soon. A copy will be sent to Community Board 14 with any changed materials, and then a hearing date would be assigned. Based on current timing at the BSA, I would estimate a February hearing, but these days, everything is in flux.
Todd, the Community Board 14 also asks applicants to inform neighbors within a 400-foot radius. And in fact, we sent you the letter. It was a couple of weeks ago, maybe Anya remembers the date more clearly than I remember anything. So are you saying that that, so that letter was not distributed?
I will tell you, I believe it was.
I thought it was too, but if you could confirm that for my board, that'd be helpful.
I'm fairly sure it was. I personally didn't do that. You know, someone in the office did. I can get confirmation out to, you know, I can't do it now, but I can do it tomorrow and double-check and make sure that it was sent out.
Yeah.
But I, how's this, I'm fairly sure it was, I just don't have any specific proof to give to you, right?
Yeah, I believe it was. I thought we had confirmation too, maybe Anya remembers that, but, but go ahead, Anya.
I was just going to say, we did receive the proof of mailing with the actual photographs of all the envelopes that did go out on October 28th.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I'm done. Thanks so much.
Steve Cohen?
Hi, I guess my question, I was looking through the materials. I see there's number 13 is photographs, which was helpful in terms of seeing what the site looked like. I was curious if there was anything that you had that in the materials that, like, give a visual for what the, what the building would actually look like on, on the site? Any 3D visual or anything?
Yeah, I could answer right now. That's an excellent question. If the BSA needs help, or if you're looking for a job, that's one of the things they ask for in the notice of comments. It's under preparation. It's one of the things we're going to submit with the response to notice of comments. We'll provide a streetscape showing it in relation to the adjacent buildings. In addition, the photographs we provided, I believe, were the satellite photographs with the initial application. There's also street-level and ground-level photographs that will be submitted with response to comments. So Community Board 14 will receive that once we make that submission. They just have not been officially submitted to the record yet. The streetscape is still pending. I'm expecting it any day, just unfortunately wasn't ready for this evening.
Ed, oh, and Steve, also, we have not asked applicants to provide the 3D models on this forum, just because the 3D model is expensive, so a 3D model on a 2D platform didn't seem to make sense. But, but I think that your, your request for rendering, or, you know, for rendering was heard. Ed, Boris Noble is next to speak.
Thank you, Boris.
Yeah, so can you tell us what the breakdown is of two one-bedroom studios, the 31 units?
Hang on a second. I know it's 31 apartments. Let me double-check. I think that, let's find a floor pan here.
Because I know that block very, very well. It's, you know, it's right off a commercial area, and that block has, on the east side, a big building that's really on Ocean Avenue, the back of it. So it's a pretty crowded block.
Right, let me double-check and see if I can find a breakdown of the actual units, one second. Unfortunately, normally the BSA asks us for drawing units. They don't normally ask about, like, whether it's one bedroom, two bedrooms, at least not for this particular type of application.
And there's no parking planned on the bottom?
Parking, no parking would be required, because it would be, because of the particular zoning district.
Okay.
Let me double-check here, so. One-bedroom units, it looks like most of them are, they're one-bedroom units on the first floor, and one-bedrooms on the upper floors also. So one-bedroom unit and the general size. It looks like they're, well, the bedroom, it looks like approximately 650 square feet gross floor area for each of the bedroom, one-bedroom units. But I can get confirmation for that, and, you know, we can include that in our notice of comments response if there's any.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up. Glenn had a hand up, and now it's down. So Glenn, your question was answered?
I found the bird's-eye photo, and I could enlarge it so that I could see just how tall the buildings were around it. So yes, that was my question, and it's been answered.
Ed, but so there's no other board members with hands up? There were no pre-registered speakers from the public on this application?
Okay, well, board members, you know what the
Motion to approve.
Ed Sen just raised his hand, just to let you know.
Who raised his hand?
Board member Edward Sen.
Edward?
I just had a question regarding, I'm not familiar with the zoning itself, but I'm just, I had a question regarding mandatory inclusionary housing, and if that was something that was required with zoning.
Sure, that would not be for this type of particular project. MIH will normally come into play if you're dealing with a, most often with, like, a rezoning situation, whereas this is a variance. One thing, though, that I would note, as far as affordable housing, is that, you know, we're still in the process, but at this time, the property owner is intending to move forward with a 421A application to housing preservation and development, which would then end up being a certain percentage of affordable housing. That would be, you know, contingent on approval by HPD and then meeting the new program requirements. I'll be honest with you, I'm not the attorney in our office. We normally works with the ins and outs of the 421A program, so I can't give you 100% specifics, but I do know that the program, what I can confidently say is the program would then set forth a certain percentage of units for affordable housing if it is accepted into the 421A program.
Okay, thank you, Todd. Are there any, any other board members who wish to ask a question or speak in any regard? Okay, hearing none, and I've been informed by the district manager that we don't have any commentary from the public. So, board members, you know the routine?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve.
Motion to approve, first of all, before that motion, we have to allow for any discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So is there any discussion on this by board members? Okay, so I guess your motion to approve is in order?
One second. Well, we usually look for a consensus, you know, as, as opposed to approving a motion, do most of us
For Prime, it's not the same thing.
Okay.
Ben, thank you.
Close enough.
Yeah. You know, let's, let's try and arrive at consensus. We huddle, we, we arrive with consensus, but I haven't heard any discussion. So if I am, if, if what I'm hearing from you is, you know, a suggestion rather than a motion, that we, that we that we, that we recommend approval to the full board. Is that what I'm hearing from you, Prime?
Yes, sir.
And I have no problem with that.
Okay, is there anyone opposed to that? See any hands raised and I, and of course, no one has verbalized anything. So, uh, we, we will recommend approval to the full board on this. Thank you, Todd, for, for that presentation. And at this time, I can move on to, to our next item.
Hey, thank you. Have a good evening. I'll work on my internet connection.
That's okay. And Todd, just for the record and so that the public knows, the, the regular meeting of the board is taking place on Monday, November 9th, which is where the full board will, will hear this recommendation and vote accordingly.
Can you confirm for me what your, every community board is different, your policy as far as do we need to make a presentation? Do you want us to make a presentation?
You do, you do not need to make a presentation. It's unlikely that you would be asked to make a presentation, but you're welcome to join in case there are any, any questions, but not required.
Okay, thank you so much. Everyone have a good evening. Stay, stay healthy and safe.
Thank you.
Okay. This, this hearing is concluded 6:00 PM, uh, for the record. And the next public hearing, um, you know, we'll give it a minute and then we'll, we'll begin at 6:37. Okay, this public hearing is ordered at 6:37 on PM on Tuesday, November 5th, 2020 via Webex. The purpose of this hearing is to hear public testimony by community members with respect to a special permit filed pursuant to section 73-622 of the zoning resolution of the City of New York as amended to request a special permit to allow the enlargement and combination of two single-family residences into one single-family residence in a residential R2 zoning district at 1215 and 1217 East 22nd Street between Avenue K and Avenue L. This is block 7622, lot 234. BSA calendar number 2020-65-BZ. The applicant's representative is Lyra J. Altman. Lyra, are you with us now?
I am. How are you all?
You're well, thank you. Please proceed.
Hi, Lyra.
Hi.
Hi, Lyra. Nice to see you.
Nice as I see. And before I go very far into this, I want to point out that I did notify the neighbors as required by your board. I am here this evening representing the Herska family and Mr. Herska's on with us, as is his architect, Jose Ramirez. And he is looking for a special permit to enlarge, I would say, a single-family home. But what they're actually looking to do in this one, which is a little unusual and actually very interesting, is they're looking to take two homes and merge them. And typically when we do that, what we've done is we've knocked down one house and expanded the other. In this case, he's maintaining the two existing homes. He's linking them in the middle. And he's making some other modifications. And if possible, if we could share a screen, I would love to go over it on the building with you. Is that possible?
Please, sure.
Yes, Lyra, do you have the share button at the bottom of your screen?
I don't. I was looking for that when you mentioned it to Todd and I don't have that option.
Let me see if I can add that one really quick. Sorry about that.
In any event, why don't we go through the objections while we're waiting for that? Because we don't need the plans to discuss that. There are four objections on this application. The first is floor area. The second is open space ratio. The third is side yard and the last is rear yard. Now, when we go through the actual numbers, as you know, the zoning district allows a .5 FAR. Typically, we request a 1.0 in these applications. In this particular application, we're actually only requesting a .92. So it's quite a bit lower. And of course, as the amount of floor area goes up, the amount of open space goes down. That always happens here. Next is the yard. When you're looking at the house from the street, on the left side, they have an existing side yard of three foot, I'm sorry, two foot eight. And they're going to be continuing that two foot eight. So it's not reducing the distance between the houses on the left and our house. And on the right side, when you're looking at it from the street, they're reducing it just slightly to a permitted side yard of 11 foot 10 inches. And lastly, the rear yard, if you look in the existing buildings, the one on the left, they're keeping the rear yard where it is. The one on the right, they're actually increasing the rear yard because the current rear yard is only 14 foot and change. And they're going to be providing slightly over 20 feet there. So those are the waivers that are requesting. And should we have the share button yet? Because I don't.
Yes, do you see it there, Lyra? I've assigned you the privileges. No, nope.
No, it's not popping up here.
Anya, can you send us the documents like you did?
You should have it. They were all in the same email, Glenn. It's the second link right below that same email. You should have them all.
I have the hard copy here as well. Okay, we can't get the share button to work. We can do it this way. As you see, these two white portions are the existing buildings as they stand. What we're looking to add is this connection right here. This little addition right here. And there's a tiny little addition right here. The front of the building is also being modified slightly. The front yard is being reduced, but not within what is a problem. They're required a 15-foot front yard. And the front yard is going to be quite a bit larger than that. If you look right here, it is going to be 16 feet. Over here, it's 15.5. Okay, so this is to give you an idea of the overview. And now I'm going to show you, I think, my favorite page of the plans.
And I believe you should have had that privilege now, Lyra.
Let's see. Ooh, perfect. Now I do. Oh, I'm so glad you did that. Let me just get into it. Are you sharing my screen right now?
We don't see a share yet.
Let's see, I'm gonna hit again. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect.
Nice.
So now you all are seeing, any of the areas that are hatched are the new portions that we're discussing. Any of the areas that are white are not. But I'm going to bring you to my favorite page of the plans. We're gonna scroll all the way to the end. And I'm going to show you what a beautiful building this is. On the top left, you are looking at the front of the building. On the bottom, you are looking at the rear of the building. And of course, on the right side, you are looking at the two sides of the building. And you all see it is absolutely beautifully done. If you have any questions, it'd be my absolute pleasure to go through them with you.
Okay, uh, any? Raise your hand.
Ed, you have Glenn Woolen and Boris Noble and Nina Sabgear with hands up.
Please proceed.
Okay, I know I'm looking this over and I'll get back to you because I have a lot of documents to look at. So thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Boris? Oh, Nina, okay, sorry.
Yeah, do you have any pictures of, you know, like a street view of the current front of that street and how it looks? And how that house is, I mean, I know there are some pretty big houses there, but how does it fit into the rest of the neighborhood?
Really, let me hit share again. And with pleasure, I will into a couple of the buildings. I'm hoping you can see it right now. Can you see these right now?
They see black and white illustrations.
Yes, that is a black and white illustration of what it looks like. As you see, the building on the right, 1221 East 22nd Street, that was actually a BSA special permit as well that came through your board a couple of years ago. More than a couple of years ago, I guess, at this point. And the two other homes on the left are existing.
Do you have a picture of what it looks like now?
Uh, actual photographs, the closest I have, let's see, photographs. I'm trying to see if I can find you. Any photographs? I can show you the existing photos.
I think I found a black and white picture of what it looks like.
Well, here, I can give you, this is what the street actually looks like. This is the site with the two homes on the left. Here is the site. You can see a portion of the home on the left and a portion of the home on the right. And here you get a better view of the home on the right.
Lyra, the bottom on the left is where I used to live in.
Oh, that's the one?
Yeah.
Nice. You're missing out on a good neighbor.
Well, what can you do? Things are worse. I went back to my original location. I'm better off.
So these are the houses across the street, just to give you a feel. This is picture eight, picture seven. These are the pictures of the houses across the street. And I will go back just for your purposes to seeing. These are the two houses that are being merged in the center, of course. The house on the right is the one I told you was previously BSA special permit. And here we go. You can kind of see the two houses to the left that are existing and are not subject to this application. Are those the photos you were hoping to see?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
And if I can just jump in, Lyra, the, this is, the, the, I mean, I, other than joining the two houses as one, are there any other modifications that, that are missing here?
Well, let me go back to the proposed plans so I can show you specifically.
Well, certainly the facade of the two houses.
If you look closely, what you'll see, there's the merger in the center, which you see very clearly. Then on the right side, you will see there is a two-story addition. Do you see that? Next to the parking spaces, the small two-story addition. Okay, then coming around towards the front of the building, the front, the shape is changing slightly and it's being brought out a bit. Okay, so that, the portion on the right side that is going to 15 foot five was previously at 16 foot 10. The piece on the left that's going to 16 foot nine, previously at 19, or I should say currently at 19. And then if you keep wrapping around the building, you're going to see that there's a tiny little addition on the left side in the side yard. You see that?
Yeah, okay.
And of course, the addition of a chimney. In addition, one of the houses currently has an attic. They both have two stories. One has an attic. What's going to happen now, I'm going to flip to the attic just to show you. There's going to be an attic that spreads across to both buildings. It's not a large attic, but it will spread across to the building on the right.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. I think the next, Sean, who was next?
Dwayne, Dwayne Joseph has his hand up. There are, there were other hands up, but they're all down now. Dwayne Joseph has a hand up.
And Nina Sabgear.
Okay.
I think that's from before.
Good evening, good evening, everyone. Uh, Lyra, I just have a question. Um, is there a precedent that's already been set in this particular area, specifically on this block for a house of this size? Because I'm looking kind of at the, amateurly at the Google street views and I don't see anything near this size on that block. And this is adding a lot of bulk to this, these particular lots. So is there a precedent or would this be the precedent?
Well, actually, if you look at this block, what you're going to see is the house to the right is quite large. That is a special permit application that was granted.
Is that, was that a combination of two lots? Was that combining two lots or just an expansion of one?
My recollection is that it was an expansion of one.
Right, so is there any precedent on the block or in the neighboring area where we have combined two lots into one?
I've done it a number of times in the area. I don't have the addresses off the top of my head. I don't believe they're on this particular block.
We approved one across the street.
I've done this.
We approved one across the street.
Well, Mr. Mr. Haas had it done, but I don't think that's right here.
No, across the street on 22nd Street, the other end, we approved two houses to be combined.
You guys did with the BSA.
Yeah, they signed the whole plan.
You guys have approved one. It was withdrawn at BSA. To be fair.
And Dwayne, I can look, I can look through our records on other, on other lot combos that we have, that the, that the board has approved. There, there is a precedent.
Lot combinations are something I've come in front of your board many times with. I could certainly come up with a list. Yeah, yeah. But as far as on this particular block, I'd have to look more specifically. I will tell you that this is a very unusual one in terms of the fact that we're not actually taking down one of the buildings. He was very careful in designing this home. When I say he, I should say Jose Ramirez, who's the architect, was very aware of what is going on in this block. And if you notice, he set back the center of the building when he did the merger. That was done to keep a very specific look on the block as opposed to having one solid edifice that came across at the 15-foot mark. He didn't do that. He was aware of what this was going to look like on the block and he tried to design accordingly. And you can see that. I'm going to scroll back to this. You can see how set back the center is and it has two front pieces on the right and left, almost appearing as two separate buildings. That's why that center is set back.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Sean, Sean, who do we have next?
Billy Richling and Greg Alvarez both have hands up.
Hi, um, so forgive me if this is sort of beyond the bounds of what we are considering when we vote on this application. And this may be a question more for, actually, my fellow board members than for the applicant. But, um, you know, as a general principle, I find myself kind of hesitant to vote for anything that sort of reduces the number of housing units in our district or anywhere in the city. I recognize this is an area of single-family homes. It's just one home. But, you know, I'm generally of the opinion that in Brooklyn and elsewhere in New York, I, I think the number of units needs to go up. Um, and sort of taking it to units and combining them into one is not something I feel super excited about, given, given the housing pressures in our area. I assume the, the thought process here is, you know, maybe the applicant has a large family or there's a need or a market for larger homes and currently exist in the area. But I'm wondering what our thought process has been about that in the past and if someone could address that for me.
To address that?
Oh, I just pointed out, I wanted your board to know that this is actually for the current owner. This is not being built as a flip. This is not being built as a development by a developer. This is somebody doing this for his own family.
Uh, if I might address this a little bit, this building boom that's been going on for the past almost 10 years now, um, has got the city somewhat overbuilt, which is driving prices down, rents down. So right now, we don't have what I would consider a housing crisis. Although that doesn't change your feelings necessarily about the situation. Um, but there's not really a shortage and there's more buildings going up all the time. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you, Glenn. Is there anyone else who wanted? A question or comment?
Yeah, I would like to kind of weigh in. If I could, this is Nina Sabgear.
Okay.
I mean, you know, a house this size does kind of take my breath away, but you know, as I, as I- I mean, you know, a, a house this size does kind of take my breath away, but, you know, as I, as I said earlier, um, the size itself relative to the neighborhood is not really unprecedented. Then I also know that, um, you know, a lot of the families are substantial, you know, we're not talking about your, uh, two-point-one kid or whatever the going number is, and, um, and many of these families, you know, are, are so cramped, you know, that, you know, I mean, not the those hu- the house they were in was so tiny, but, you know, they would be looking at, well, we can either expand here and stay where we are, or we're gonna head upstate, you know, to like the Muncie Spring Valley area where, you know, or maybe Mayford or someplace like that where we can, you know, get a lot more land and a lot more, uh, oval room. So, you know, so that's, you know, something to consider in terms of, you know, retaining the neighborhood.
Okay.
Ed, you had Greg Alvarez, uh, next in line to speak.
Greg, please.
Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Greg, yeah.
Okay, great, uh, yeah, just a few things, uh, I think just following up on, uh, Dwayne's comments, uh, Rick, the, uh, the, the size of the building, I just also wanted to, uh, uh, confirm as well whether or not there might be precedent as well for the size of the lot. It does look like the lot is a little bit larger than, um, the lot next door, the next door, it looks like it was a sixty-foot, uh, width lot, and then here it's an eighty-foot lot. So, I, I just wanna make sure that, that there, there would be precedent there for that. Um, and then related to that, I know Lira touched on this already, um, can you talk a little bit more about all of the mitigation factors you have taken into account here, I think you mentioned earlier about that it's sort of set in in the middle, that might reduce the bulk a little bit? And then, um, um, also on it, the, the floor area ratio is a little bit lower than, you know, than the one, so if you could just talk about that as well, just to kind of, you know, just to kind of fit in with here with what 622 talks about.
It was, it was a little hard to hear, I'm sorry, I was...
So, Lira, it was a question, if you can hear me better, it, it was a question about some of the, the mitigations in design, there was a setback in the middle to, to, um, decrease bulk, I think is what, um, Gregory saw in the, in the, uh, in the plans, and also asking about the, the precedent of, um, combining the disparate lot sizes.
Something that's been done many, as far as combining lots to get to an eighty, it has been done a number of times in the area, and I know that, cause I've personally done it a number of times in this area. So, that there is certainly precedent for, as I said, perhaps not on this exact block, but it has certainly been done in Community Board 14, in the area in which the special permit is permitted. As far as discussions of design of the building, I don't know how much more information you would like, we already discussed the fact that it was set back. Would you like the architect to discuss it as well?
Okay, I'll ask you that at the very end.
Gregory, if you can hear me, um, Lira is asking if you want the architect to talk about the design, including the setback.
Yes, that would be great, if you can hear me.
Ramirez, the architect, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, um, so, yes, the, the, we, we spent a lot of time with the owner, back and forth, um, designing the building, being respective to the massing, knowing that it is an eighty, um, eighty-foot lot, and, um, time was spent, uh, reducing the bulk of the building, um, you know, in, in, you could design, like Lira said, a building that, that stretches across the entire eighty-foot width in infill and create a massive building, but if you look at the, if you look at the elevations and the rendering, it's the building set back in the center, we have lower roof height on the side, we change a roof height in the rear, there's a lot of massing studies that were done to try to keep the bulk of the building down, I think it was very successful, in that the building does not appear to be as large as it could be. Um, so like I said, we spent a lot of time setting the center back, we even put the windows in the center, served the function of creating kind of like a, a light connector between the two masses, so that the building does not appear, uh, very heavy from, from, from the facade also. So that we employed that, um, light, uh, window, um, horizontal fenestration to also lessen the mass of the building. We, and if you look around the entire perimeter, it goes up and down, in and out, pushes back, pushes in, the roof lines. I think a lot of time was, was spent successfully reducing the mass of the building.
Thank you, Jose, uh, Greg, Greg, if you can hear. Address your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay.
Ed Varden Prasad has a hands up, and Svi Platsker would also like to speak, Svi and Varden.
Svi, please. Svi Platsker?
Ed, it looks like he's having trouble with his microphone, I'll try to help unmute him, one more.
While you're working on that, perhaps we can go on to Varden and come back to, uh, Svi Platsker. Varden Prasad?
Adam, can you hear me? Um, I'm not sure if you addressed it earlier, as I can recall, but the history of ownership of the two lots is, the owner owned one, bought the other, or bought the two simultaneously, or if you'd just like, give me a quick sketch out of that?
Uh, I don't have an answer to that, Jose, by any chance, do you know, did he purchase them both at the same time for this?
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure, no.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Varden. Uh, Svi, are you with us now?
In, in the meantime, Ed, we have Glenn, oh, go ahead, Anya.
Sorry to interrupt, I do see that Svi Platsker is unmuted, if he would like to try it again. You are not muted, Svi. It looks like he may not have a microphone.
Ed, we have, uh, Glenn Woolens has a hand up.
Uh, thank you, I'm curious, do we have any of the neighbors signed up to speak?
No, no pre-registered speakers.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any, uh, hands up?
No, I'm seeing none.
Okay, Svi, you, you wanna try it one more time?
I'll just say, Svi, if you can't get your comment in, um, you can email the office or give me a call tomorrow, and we will try to make any comments you have part of the record, or get an answer from you, um, retroactively.
I'll be happy to answer any questions you call me.
I just wanted to add, I spoke with Svi, I spoke with Svi, his question was answered, so we are good.
Okay, thanks. Since we have no, uh, pre-registered speakers, or, or, uh, commentators, uh, uh, board members, let's huddle and, and, uh, let's try and arrive at consensus here, uh, is there any discussion, any comment?
Um, this is Billy, I just have a quick, I guess, quick question, to go back to the very first thing about the parameters with which we consider these applications, am I, you know, if I vote to approve or, or deny this, is it that I, as a community board member, can decide, for any set of reasons, I think it's not in the interests of our district to approve this, and therefore I can vote no, or is it that on the grounds of, of the application, you know, are there any particular individual considerations based on our own rules that I find problematic, and, and so it's a narrower framework, Sean?
You can vote, uh, you know, based upon either or, you know, as, as a board member, uh, you know, you have, you have the option to, to vote your feelings on it, so, uh, you know.
Ed, if I might comment, uh?
Yeah, sure, sure.
What we do today is try to come to a consensus of what we're presenting to the full board, and at the full board is when we're gonna actually vote. So, you can vote any way you want at the full board meeting, uh, and today is just a matter of consensus as to what we think, is a good idea or not a good idea. And, uh, I personally think it's a, a nice-looking building, and since none of the neighbors have signed up to oppose it, I see no problem.
I agree.
Uh, and Billy, if I could just add too, and as a reminder, because it hasn't been mentioned except for when Ed introduced the item, this is a proposal in the special permit district, and Billy, I think that you were there a couple of years or a year or so ago when Richard Barak made a presentation to our board about why the special permit, um, district was established, but I'm happy, regardless, that doesn't, you know, not meant to sway, you're, you're welcome to chime in on however you feel, but, um, I'm happy to provide those materials as a reminder of the establishment of the special permit district, and the fact that this board does have a precedent for, uh, approving, uh, bigger abodes, uh, in the special permit district than elsewhere in the district.
For sure, yeah, I was there, and I appreciate that, um, and I certainly understand the need, I guess I'm just a little concerned about, you know, to the extent that this is something that is and continues to be a trend, the sort of long-term cumulative impact of, of many of these types of conversions, is, uh, I'm just not sure what that means, I, I feel a little ambivalent about, about what that pretends for housing in the future.
Which is fair, and well, but we, we can also just review the parameters of the special permit district, so the trend within that would be different than the trend outside of it.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, let me hear some more, uh, some more input on this, uh, uh, board members, what do you want to do with this?
I think we should bring the consensus to the board.
Well, be- before that happens, Ephraim, this is Dwayne Joseph. Um, I, I, I share Billy's concern, I, I will say that, and I'd like to have it on the record, um, you know, I, I, I am concerned that we are creating a, a bit of a trend, even if it's within the special tri- uh, hey Boris, can you, can you mute yourself, Boris, please? Boris, can you mute yourself?
Anya, can, can you mute Boris? I don't have his number, Anya, can you, can you mute Boris, okay, it's done. Anya did it.
Thank you, thank you.
So I just, I just wanted to have it on the record, Ed, it's Dwayne again, I just wanted to have it on the record, I am a bit concerned about this, um, I know, you know, I, I would love to, if, Sean, if you don't mind sharing, um, resharing the information about the special, um, permit there, or, I could be mislabeling that, uh, just so we have, like, at least for myself, I have a refresher of it, it would be great, uh, before the next board meeting. Um, but I just wanted to express that.
Will do.
Listen, Sean, I would like to make a suggestion. It's very nice, it's very nice that people get pictures and we see, um, models. As I mentioned once before, I personally make my business to go check out the project with my own eyes. It'll be a lot easier for people to realize what's happening, they'll see things themselves, as opposed to just looking at the plans or a model, just a point of information. Yes, it takes five, ten minutes to drive down, but it works.
Well, of course, that's a great suggestion, uh, uh, Ephraim, uh, for, for people who, uh, have the, uh, the, the time and the wherewithal to do so, it's, it's, it's a, it's a great way to, uh, inform yourself about, uh, uh, any project that's going on in our, our board district. Thank you for that.
No problem.
So, what are we doing, guys? I mean, i- if, if you have reservations, um, I, I don't just need to hear your reservations, I, I need to hear, you know, your reservations, but what, you know, how, how should we proceed?
Uh, this is Dwayne again, uh, I mean, I have my reservations, I've expressed that, I don't think we should, uh, move this, uh, for a vote at the next board meeting until we get more information about what the precedent is around this, um, and also just a refresher on, um, what, you know, that, that specific area and the, the permitting is there, um, that's, that's my position.
Okay.
Dwayne, this is Glenn, um, basically, in this, this particular district, the rule has been to keep the FARs at one or below, and occasionally they've been pushed, and that's when we've objected, this is below a one FAR. So, it's, it's within the scope of what we've been approving over the years. So, I, so I have no objection to it.
Okay. Okay, so I'm hearing, uh, objections, I'm hearing no objection, I hear.
Varden, Varden Prasad has a hand up, and Greg Alvarez have, has a hand up.
Great, uh, Varden, please?
This is a theme that I think has arisen over the last few years. I, I'm not sure that this particular applicant is one on which I would take a do-or-die stand. But in general, I'm gonna side with Dwayne and Billy in that I think this deserves, as a concept, a significant review. Um, again, I'm not entirely a hundred percent certain that this is the development in which I would make that stand, but I would certainly argue for a more comprehensive review of the trends and how they're impacting neighbor, how they are having an impact on the neighborhoods, and what our responsibility should be to our neighborhoods. Thanks.
Uh, Greg, are you, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me? Okay, so, yeah, so I just wanted to point out that, uh, if we're reading directly from the special permit requirement, this is what it says, this is the last, uh, sentence, and I think this is the crux of, you know, anytime we hear these sorts of applications, so it reads as follows. "The board shall find," uh, and this is the, uh, the BSA, but we're recommending to the BSA, "so the board shall find that the enlarged buildings will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or district in which the building is located, nor impair the future use or development of the surrounding area. The board may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards to minimize adverse effects on the character of the surrounding area." So, that, that's really what, you know, I think our fudge is, what the board charges, and, and for me, I think, you know, I, I agree with Varden says, I, I don't necessarily think that this is the application, you know, to, to have that stand, I, I, I think it's really, what, what I'd like to hear, I think, from applicants in general would be, um, you know, sort, sort of a more thoughtful understanding of what the other, um, examples are in the neighborhood or on the block. Just so that I think we can have a clearer picture and can look at it and say, sure, we've done this before, it, it, it does fit in with the immediate area, and that then, of course, you know, we, we, we agree that, uh, the special permit, you know, should be, should be applied. Um, so, so, I mean, I think that's what I've been looking for here, so, I mean, I think from my perspective, I think, you know, I think it's something we can recommend, but, you know, I, I would just condition it on, on something that could be provided where, again, it would be a more thoughtful, uh, review of, uh, uh, of those prior precedents, and, you know, that, that, that an applicant will, will look to that. and, you know, that an applicant will look to that and say, of course, look at that one over there, look at this one over here. So that's all I have for, that's all I have to say on this one.
Mr. Chair.
The next person to speak is Abe Treff.
Yeah, hi, how are you? I just don't understand. The board has previously approved buildings like this. Normally, when we come to the board, we're trying to expand the buildings, and it's usually we're going into a backyard or we're taking away a driveway. They're not doing any of this over here, so our job is, as of right, is, are they entitled to this? Or aren't they entitled to it? Our job is not to say, well, he's building a much bigger building, and maybe it's sticking out. That's not the case in this case over here anyway, because they're setting in the building, and it's not going to stick out. Just because some of our board members feel uncomfortable because someone is building a palace, that's not of our concern. Is he entitled to it, or is he not entitled to it? That's our job, and then we could bring it up to the main board. We're just here to make the recommendation, and the main board will do it. But for us to set this aside and say, let's come back and discuss it, there's nothing more to discuss over here. We have the plans, we looked at it, is he entitled to it? Then we should vote to approve it.
It looks like Snowball would actually like to address the, address us on purpose. Boris Noble is next to speak.
So I hear the bigger picture, you know, which is really a city planning issue. I mean, if, it's really, we have to take this to city planning. If we want to downsize the neighborhood, it's really city planning. What I'm actually interested in is, does the building, the current building have any open violations with DOB? Because at the end of the day, this landlord, this owner, is actually going and following the rules. They're going through the process, they're going through the, you know, framework, through the, you know, the protocol. They're not doing it and then coming back to us and saying, now approve it. To me, that's when I get a bigger, in that case, I would say no, because that's, you know, it takes some gall to do that. So in this case, I believe we just base it just on the merits, not on the bigger picture. The bigger picture, really, we should actually go to city planning and say, let's downsize the area. That's a whole different story. So I'm kind of, you know, I hear both sides. But at the end of the day, the owner is following the rules, is following the protocol, and they're asking for our permission. So, and it doesn't have to be unanimous, people can vote no. All right, that's it.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone who has spoken on this. Is there anyone else?
There are no new hands up.
Okay. Yeah, as far as the board's responsibility or this. We do have a, you know, responsibility to make a recommendation based upon, you know. If the applicant is, you know, is being a good person, or if they're doing the right thing. The fact that the building has to be in character with the proposed building should be in character with the rest of the neighborhood, the rest of the block. You know, that's a responsibility of ours. And, you know, if anyone is suggesting that this building is out of character or something with the block or the rest of the neighborhood or surrounding area. That's a valid question, but just to say that for some reason you don't care for it, or because, you know, of housing issues in the city or something, that's the way to go. Our real responsibilities as board members who are present here tonight, who are to make a recommendation to the full board on how the board should actually vote on this. I, I, your, I mean, we need to arrive at a consensus, something that we can all live with. But, you know, that. We should, we should recommend. I heard a few comments. You know, against, basically against approving, you know, as it is. I think I heard one person mention approving with some stipulations. But I think I'm hearing more approval than I'm hearing anything else right now. So. So, you know, let me know if, 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 you know, my take is correct. If you are not, you know, if that's not how you feel, let me know, so that we can kind of hash this out and arrive at a real consensus here.
Steve Cohen has a hand up.
Please.
Yeah, so I think, you know, the overall policy discussion is interesting. I think Billy, Dwayne, Barden, and Boris made some good points in that regard. So actually, what I thought I had was maybe, you know, maybe it would be a good topic for the, maybe the Community Environment Committee, or, you know, to have like a special, you know, board meeting to have maybe a sort of the policy discussion, iron that out. But I agree with some of the other folks who've said, and includes Barden sentiment. I don't think, you know, that this application itself should be held up, you know, for that overall discussion. I think, you know, this is in line with stuff we've approved before, so I would move to approve.
I see your hand up.
Yes, I'm just remembering I said, the reason why, said what I did before, exactly for this reason, so people see what the whole block looks like. You can't see one house by a picture, you can't see by plans. You want to see a block, you got to see a block. That's the only fair way to do it. People are on the board, their responsibility to see what they're doing, not just to go by blind. Even if you Google it on Google Maps, you'll see the whole block. Similar to what we were showing us before.
Okay, thank you. So, I think, you know, and Steve, I think I, you know, my feelings are very much the same. You know, while there might be concerns, I don't think the concerns are sufficient to, you know, just have this applicant, you know. Else that, you know, is going on here. I mean, if there's more information that we need to get as a board, or as board members, or anything like that, education we need to get, you know, I don't think it's appropriate for us to kind of hold the, hold this applicant hostage on that. So. May I have the floor for Ramon, please?
I just want to make a short comment. I live on East 23rd Street, partially backing the property in question. I'm actually backing the previous project that the board approved for a proposed building that's been built and the families have moved in. And, you know, I'm almost the only one present that lives literally within the yards of the project. And I've, I've passed it, I've seen the two buildings that are existing now. And overall, I'm living in the neighborhood over 40 years. My family grew up in this neighborhood, and they actually live in this neighborhood and bought homes in this neighborhood. The only thing that happened to this neighborhood in the last 40 years, with all these.
Mr. Eisenberg, we lost you there.
Mr. Eisenberg, we can't hear you right now. You have to put your microphone back on.
Yes, I can hear you.
This microphone is on, it's just not functioning.
Okay. They've gone their own way, but insofar as the neighborhood is concerned, and I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, I can attest being the resident of the house right behind me that took over two and a half years to build, and it turned out to be beautiful, certainly it greatly felt nicer than the building that was there before. And the same thing will happen here. I can't imagine that the new property and the request that's being made to make the changes to the existing two pieces of property will do anything to make the overall neighborhood nothing but improve.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenberg.
Mr. Chair, are you ready to wrap up then? Were there no additional hands?
I saw one overtime running.
Once again, let's huddle now. Do we have consensus to approve? Or are we saying approve with any conditions, or just what? Let's go. Okay.
Can I? May I make a motion?
You know. For this, we're just trying to arrive at consensus, so please, go ahead, say what you'd like to say.
Oh, so I was going to move that we approve it, if it doesn't have to be done as motion then.
Okay, thank you, Nina. For anyone who is opposed to approval, suggesting, recommending approval to the full board.
This is Dwayne, I am.
Those members will have the opportunity to, Ed, just remember that this is a consensus recommendation to the full board, and members who still maintain an opposition to it will have the opportunity to do a voice vote at Monday's meeting, and that opposition will become part of the public record at that time.
May I say something?
Sure, Al.
I just want to offer my services to the extent that they're useful. I'd be happy to discuss with Dwayne Joseph, Billy Richland, anyone else who's interested, some of the history of the special permit district, and some of the precedents that we. We have a number of properties within the special permit designated district that, for which we have approved a combination of two adjacent lots, the construction of a single residence, combined lot. So this is not without substantial precedent.
Yeah, wow. Thank you. I'm just like, I'm like, frowning.
Okay, so. There's no other discussion here. I think what we're, what I'm hearing from at least the majority of board members who are present or who have spoken is a recommendation to approve. So correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're going to. The full board to approve this.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent.
All right. Thank you, board members.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, Lyra. All right. Once again, thanks for attending, and we'll see you at the board meeting.